Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests and city staff. I want to welcome you to our public work session for today, April 8th. Also want to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter.
Thank you.
Mr. Derek Challenger, Deputy City Attorney Derek Challenger. Also want to acknowledge my colleagues on council for being here today. Ms. White, Chicago Rose, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Dr. Dotson?
Here.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Mr. Carter, sure you have the floor?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, my colleagues, welcome to this evening's work session. We have a few presentations for you this evening. We're going to start with Mr. Brian Donahue with our economic issue here. He was slated to be here on our last one, but time would not permit, so he's going to tee it off for us tonight. Followed by Lieutenant Luck with a presentation on our towboard. And then, community development led by Ms. Dr. Ronda Russell. We'll have a couple of presentations, one on the CPDG Annual Action Plan and a couple of time extensions that we're looking for, for a couple of developments. But, so Donahue, you lead us off, sir.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to come before you and looking forward to presenting to you this afternoon on Portsmouth's economic future and what lies ahead. I think you'll find that it's significant and I would even say potentially historic as it relates to economic development opportunities in the city of Portsmouth. So first, I'd like to just start out in highlighting what we like to refer to as Portsmouth as being the center of the new blue economy. As many of you are probably very familiar with the fact that Portsmouth sits in the center of Virginia's new blue economy and really the world's largest maritime industrial base. A blue economy is centered around the maritime environment and all things that are related to the marine ecosystem specifically from an enterprise standpoint. So, we're talking about industries like shipping, transportation, power generation, research, related goods and services that support economic growth and address societal change challenges. Many of the support assets that we have identified here, I think are well-regarded within the region and beyond. We are a port host community. We host two, or the Port of Virginia's five terminals here in our community, that being the Virginia International Gateway Terminal and Portsmouth Marine Terminal. We are a military and defense community. We have a number of commands centered here in Portsmouth, our naval shipyard, the naval hospital, our Coast Guard base, and of course, the 5th District Headquarters of the Coast Guard. We are a military community. We are a coast guard city and it is integral to our economy, which we will discuss this evening. And then our workforce. We really have an exceptional workforce here in the Hampton Roads region, over 895,000 strong, consisting of graduates and transitioning military personnel as well, which also includes 15,000 exiting members of the military annually. So as we are working to grow our economy, grow our workforce, we want to provide opportunities to retain that military workforce as it transitions to the civilian side of things and keep them here in our community. I think that these assets that have been identified are strengths that will benefit not just the region, but will provide opportunity for Portsmouth businesses as well. So I'd like to highlight some of the targeted industry sectors that we are focused on as it relates to economic development. The first four highlighted in blue, those are specifically what we would refer to again as the blue economy industries. But, you know, our maritime. We are a maritime community. That's why Portsmouth exists, is why we were founded. We continue to be a world leader in the maritime realm. Distribution and logistics, being a port community and all the things that come along with that. Offshore wind, which is a new and emerging technology and industry for our region, you'll find is the epicenter of that, is headquartered here in Portsmouth. Unmanned and uncrewed systems, this is an emerging technology. We have a presence of unmanned and uncrewed systems here in the city. We're working to grow that industry and we're seeing interest as it relates to the defense community for those technologies. Advanced manufacturing, we have a number of manufacturers in the city, always looking to grow that side of the house. Cyber data and emerging technologies, including AI, we'll talk about that a little bit further. Small business and startups and residential development, which in many cases would not be considered a targeted industry sector, but for Portsmouth it is because it's essential that we create an adequate supply of affordable and quality housing for our workforce. So we will be focusing on that as well. So I'd like to touch on each of those industries and again, just really kind of drilling down into why these are important for Portsmouth and what the opportunities look like ahead of us. Again, we are a world-class maritime community for over three centuries and you can see that on our waterways, in our industrial markets throughout the city. We have access to open shipping channels that can accommodate two-way traffic. It's very unique, not just in the region, but on the eastern seaboard as well. The fact that we have 15 military installations within the greater Hampton Roads region, we are at the center of that. And again, highly skilled workforce to support. So what are we doing to capture the new blue economy in the maritime industry? We are pursuing opportunities in the ship repair and fabrication sector. We've been repairing ships, whether it's at the public yards or private yards here in our city. We'll continue to do that and build upon that. However, we're also expanding our reach within fabrication. So we are now building aircraft carrier components as well as submarine components here in the city of Portsmouth. Fairlead, which is just outside our window here, is actually in the process of doing that right now to provide for our future fleet, to protect our national security and support our defense. We will be looking to expand that. We're working with a number of our shipyards here in the city and private property owners to make sure that that opportunity exists. We're continuing to focus on preservation, marine systems and electronics and marine construction as well. This will be a growing industry. If you've been following some of the activities in Washington, the administration is looking at creating an office of shipbuilding, which ties directly into what we're working to accomplish here in Portsmouth. And I think there's going to be a tremendous amount of opportunity to come from that. We have other companies here in the city that are growing in this realm. General Dynamics is currently expanding their shipyard on Harper Avenue, south of Portsmouth Marine Terminal. They're adding improvements to their peers, as well as a new tower crane, so they can host the largest naval vessels in the fleet. Amphibious ships that are currently being serviced in Norfolk will be able to now be serviced in Portsmouth. They'll be adding close to 200 jobs and investing $20 million to allow for that to happen. So we're seeing this occur today, so it is a reality. Collins Machine Works, JRF Ship Repair, Mills Marine, Crofton Industries, WF McGann are all Portsmouth-based companies that are in the expansion process as we speak. So lots of activity in the maritime realm and I would expect for this to continue for some time. Distribution and logistics, when we talk about port-centric activity, we are really at the center of the region's port industrial base. In terms of proximity to the port, you can see there in the bottom right-hand corner, that is Eunice Logistics, which is a new distribution facility opened just about a year ago, pretty much at the back gate of Virginia International Gateway. Probably not another facility like that in the entire region, I would say perhaps even the eastern seaboard. There are opportunities for Portsmouth to host additional projects like that. We are limited from an acreage standpoint in terms of land availability, but this is a 70,000-plus square foot building. I think this is kind of our play and what we're able to accommodate within the city based on our land inventory. This will be a focus going forward and I think there is interest right now for some projects that are in the pipeline. Stonemont Financial Group will be constructing 168,000-square-foot building in the Burton's Point Community of the city, just south of the naval shipyard, investing over $16 million in a new distribution facility. We've also been working with the DeLong Company and Raymont Logistics, two firms that are new to the region. They will be each setting up their own rail-serve transloading facility in proximity to Portsmouth Marine Terminal to bring agricultural commodities through the city via rail to container to be exported through the Port of Virginia to global markets. Combined, those projects are investing close to $100 billion for these new transloading facilities, which are the first of its kind in the state of Virginia and will be exporting some of the highest volumes on the East Coast. So we're excited about that. It's really put Portsmouth on the map and you will see those moving forward this coming fiscal year. Offshore wind, I believe everybody has probably driven by Portsmouth Marine Terminal and viewed the large structures that are assembled there on the terminal. Pretty amazing to see now that it's actually underway and under construction, but it's been a long time planning and coordinating to make that happen. But what you're witnessing is really one of the largest offshore wind projects in the world. Under construction right now, certainly largest in the U.S. and will continue through 2026 when it will be completed. 176 wind turbines powering over 660,000 homes with clean renewable energy, all being staged and developed out of Portsmouth Marine Terminal. We are now a global destination for the offshore wind industry. We will be working to build upon what has been established. There are some uncertainties in Washington right now with what that looks like in the future as it relates to the industry, but we will have a wind farm operating off the coast of Virginia Beach for the next 20 years, which will need maintenance and servicing. And we expect that a lot of that work will be coming out of Portsmouth. Dominion Energy's new installation vessel, which is called the Caribdis, will be homeported in Portsmouth, created out of Portsmouth, and we are excited to be supporting them here in our city. We have a wonderful new offshore wind terminal, which has over $220 million in new investments. That is now an asset per community that we can work to market and build upon and attract new business. We have had existing Portsmouth business that has been able to participate in this project, Chesapeake Bay Diving, which was located in Port Norfolk. As a contract, they are installing all the subsea cabling for the wind farm and as a result, they've actually expanded to a new facility on Airline Boulevard. So I think a nice success story that has resulted directly from this project. I touched on unmanned and uncrewed systems. Again, you will see that we are well-suited for this. We've actually even posted some uncrewed vessels just outside at one of our marinas here that has worked for the offshore wind industry, doing some surveying work. As defense goes to a more autonomous platform, you will see more of this happening. We believe that given our location, the defense industry that surrounds us here in the region, that we're well-suited to support this and we'll be working with groups to bring them here to the city. Advanced manufacturing, working with a number of our local firms that are in an expansion mode right now. You can see some there on the screen. Cannabis, which is the Virginia Region 5 Medical Marijuana, growing and processing outfit, obviously doing some pretty interesting things here in the city of Portsmouth, but really serving the entire needs of the region and we'll be working to help them with their growth needs. Lynx Industries, which is a manufacturer of rigid metal ductwork, they are investigating some opportunities for expansion as well. So we are working with them, as well as Collins Machine Works, which is located in Port Center Commerce Park. They are provider and purveyor of driveshafts for the U.S. Navy and they are working to expand their operations here in the city as well. Believe that cyber and data are a play that Portsmouth now is able to pursue based upon the city's investment in its municipal infrastructure and the 55-mile fiber optic network that has been installed, which provides access to our regional broadband authority and the subsea cables that are coming through Virginia Beach to European, South American and African markets, really putting our city at the center of the global economy. As economies have become more data-driven, we are finding that Portsmouth is well positioned to be a host for data centers. Most of the projects that I think we're familiar with as it relates to data center would be something on a very large scale, but there's many forms that they can actually come in. And we're currently investigating opportunities for small-scale data to be located in the city. We are part of the I-64 Innovation Corridor, stretching from Richmond down to Hampton Roads, and we're working to play a part of that internet traffic pipeline that runs between Hampton Roads and the Richmond region and beyond to Northern Virginia. Over 70% of the world's data travels through the state of Virginia. So there's an opportunity for Portsmouth to capture some of that. We're working to do that. Conversation with some firms now. Small business and startups, this is really something that we have been focused on, and I say "we," our office, but also the city's Economic Development Authority. And I'm proud to say that Portsmouth is the center for small business in the Hampton Roads region. I believe we've developed a reputation as being the number-one destination for an entrepreneur or small business that's looking to start and launch and grow and expand their business. We have prioritized the provision of resources and services for small businesses here in the city. In addition to that, we have a number of affordable coworking office venues that can accommodate small businesses and you'll see some of those here on the screen, Bloom Coworking, the Incub Hub, the Mustard Seed Place. These are venues that are known throughout the region. You would possibly be surprised, I'm not, but you may be to find that there are people from Virginia Beach, Hampton, Newport News that are being housed in those offices there. They've chosen to come to Portsmouth because we have an entrepreneurial ecosystem that we have fostered and grown here in the region and it's no secret to anybody now. The EDA has, in the last three years, assisted over 200 businesses with grants and resources, totaling over half a million dollars in just that short time span. And those are small business development grants, micro grants, anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000 that they're providing to help launch and grow these businesses. We had over 742 new businesses that were established in 2024 in the city as a result. So this is going to be a continued focus. We're seeing a return on this and I think it's worth sharing that, you know, over 95% of those businesses that are participating are minority women owned firms. I mentioned residential development. We are highly focused on bringing new housing units to Portsmouth. We have over 1,000 in the pipeline. We need to continue to push forward with developing additional housing opportunities that are affordable quality, where we can provide adequate housing stock for the workforce we're working to attract. It's going to be critical as we compete with our neighboring communities that we're bringing people to Portsmouth to live, work and play. So I'm going to transition to some strategic initiatives that we're focusing on and highlight three areas that city staff is working closely with our Economic Development Authority to move forward. I think it's important to note that we are taking the initiative to make these things happen and those are the downtown waterfront redevelopment for Innovation District and the Entertainment District around Rivers Casino. So first on the list is the waterfront. It is the highest priority of the EDA. I'm going to retreat, but it's one of your priorities as well. And I do believe that when you have your joint meeting with the EDA in May, I believe on May 12th, that you will find that you are both going to be in lockstep with that as a priority and looking to make that happen. We are looking at a phased approach for the development of the waterfront. Phase one being the former Holiday Insight, which we have rebranded as Crawford Bay in reference to the waterway there. We have had a market study performed in the last year that identified the opportunity for a $366 million investment with over 300 multifamily units, potential for 180-room hotel, retail space, structured parking office. This is really the premier opportunity to get the waterfront moving and the EDA is fully committed to it. We have been working to bring on a consultant to help with the packaging of a quest-for-interest solicitation, which we would look to put out in the fall, and that will be to solicit a development partner to move forward with this initiative. There are a number of things that will need to happen to do that. One will be the city council's participation and support. We are looking for two members to participate in project committee. That will serve with two members of the EDA, city staff, which will be part of the team that will put that solicitation package together and then also collectively review potential responses. So we will need your support and involvement and we will obviously be talking about this quite a bit in the coming months because this is happening, the trains left the station and we're ramping up our efforts here. Phase two would be the civic center. And where we sit today, working to redevelop this property, the parking lot, former city jail, courthouse complex, as well as 801 Water Street. We see that as a longer-term second phase, whereas phase one is likely a one-to-three-year development timeline, we're looking at three to five years for the civic center. However, some of the components need to get underway today and I know Mr. Carter's working very hard with the team to make sure that demolition of the jail happens this year and some of the other things that need to fall into place are also underway. So we will be working hard as we move forward on this and be working with you to see this really fruition. The Innovation District, we've had a tremendous amount of activity that's taken off in just the last 60 days. We are implementing the Innovation District Plan, which you adopted, and working to develop a number of projects that have been in the pipeline. Woda Cooper Company has broken ground in a 50-unit apartment community. We have King's Landing, which is a 49-unit townhome development, which the EDA just closed on a few weeks ago, property that we transferred. A4 Development Group has scheduled a break ground in the next couple of weeks. We have some momentum now in this district, along with other activities such as the Wall Street Bureau Festival, bringing attention to an area that has really been kind of underserved and has lacked attention for a number of years. We're now creating a new community with new energy. There's a tremendous amount of potential here to bring new businesses, new housing, new healthcare services, and those are things that were identified in the Innovation District Plan that, you know, Maker Square, Health and Wellness, and then the MLK Gateway itself, announcing to visitors, residents alike, that you have arrived in a community that right now really doesn't exist. So we're creating a whole new neighborhood. The last initiative is the Entertainment District. So we have a wonderful new casino now in year two of operation, $340 million initial investment, one of the largest projects ever in the city of Portsmouth, plans for a hotel. Year one of operations had over $18 million in new revenues to the city. Last year exceeded that and we became in just over $21 million. And we think there's opportunity for growth here beyond the hotel. So we have collectively about 14 acres of land that the EDA has ownership of. We are under agreement with Rush Street Gaming, the developer of the casino for that property. So they have development rights and we're working with them to determine what types of uses can play off of what's already here to make this a greater destination, not just for Portsmouth, but Hampton Roads and the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we are working to determine what those uses look like, but we feel there's a need for some family types of entertainment uses. In addition to that, more retail, dining, housing potentially. So those are all things that are being looked at and we're already seeing interest from the private sector. The adjacent Newport properties, you may be aware, recently sold at a tax auction. Those are now under the control and ownership of residential developers, so we're expecting to see several hundred more housing units that will be coming to the area as well, homeownership. We're also looking at potential for multifamily development. So you really have, again, this district is really going to be a community of its own and we'll be working to support that effort as well. And lastly, perhaps one of the most important reasons all of these preceding sectors were being focused on and targeted is our workforce and our residents. We are working through our Portsmouth At Work program to ensure that Portsmouth citizens and residents have the opportunities to participate in this economic growth. We want to make sure that our residents are prepared, that they're qualified and capable of filling the jobs that these new businesses are going to create. So Portsmouth At Work, our local workforce development program is working to do that. We're working in concert with our partners throughout the region, Portsmouth Public Schools, Tidewater Community College, Hampton Roads Workforce Council and beyond, making sure that we have a training programs available, which are provided at no cost to our residents if they choose to participate. And we're looking, again, to tie these to those targeted industry sectors, so healthcare, building trades, the maritime sector, commercial trucking, offshore wind, these are all areas that a Portsmouth resident can come and obtain certifications and credentialing in so they can go and obtain active employment, something that could be potentially life-changing and will better our community and their quality of life, most importantly. So with that, I'll conclude. I'm trying to leave a few minutes here for some community. Questions?
Councilman Dotson, sure you have the floor?
Yes, on the waterfront development in the retreat, I thought we put some dates on that. I don't see those dates on your slide for deadlines for the RFP, the development and the demolition.
This is the same slide, so I'm not sure. I may have mentioned some dates, which I can certainly speak to now. We're working to bring onboard a real estate consultant, which will happen this spring and that consultant is going to be instrumental in preparing the solicitation package, which will be advertised in the fall, and that's the actual solicitation for a potential development partner to respond to. So that will likely occur in the September, October timeframe.
Could we get an update on those dates? I think, I thought we had set some of those dates in the meeting, we'd agreed to them? I don't remember exactly.
Not to my recollection, but we can have that discussion with the manager.
I don't recall.
I don't recall any specific dates.
I would suggest we're working with the EDA and the EDA is developing a timeline, which we can which we can share, and I think that's something that would be a good topic of discussion potentially for the retreat.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Councilman Thomas, may I have a floor?
Thank you. First, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Donahue, and I was waiting for your catchphrase that you mentioned at the retreat, "We're open for business."
Yes.
So I just want to echo that and think, you know, just identifying some of the areas that we're growing. One of the things you mentioned about, you know, trying to capture some of that military that's, you know, leaving the military, making sure they want to stay in Portsmouth, live in Portsmouth. I just want to shout out Mr. James Cullen that runs the Old Town Farmers Market, as well as he has a volunteer, like he coordinates the volunteers from the military. And they, some of the volunteers, actually after becoming involved in the community volunteering hours, they've actually moved here, and I think that's a big part of, you know, retaining that workforce, the military workforce, getting them involved outside of their normal jobs. So I just wanted to shout out Mr. Cullen and his wife for that as well. And then I think my last thing was, the, you mentioned someone like the housing development, some of the, you know, with the Innovation District, the additional acres of land around the casino. One thing that I've always been concerned about is just making sure we also have food sources, grocery stores for as we continue to grow. I know we've been developing housing. Are we factoring that in as well? Because there are certain communities in our city that, I wouldn't call them completely food deserts, but there's no, like, walkable grocery store, walkable food sources for fresh food. And so as we plan these communities, I just wanted to throw that out there. I hope that that's something we can bring along as well.
If I may respond, we are looking at recruiting other grocers to the community. One of the challenges is that our demographics need to support that. So in order to gain the attention of those types of establishments, we have to have sufficient factor of growth, but also working to increase our income levels is important. And I think what you will find is that as these additional housing units come online, will suddenly start to maybe appear on their radar, whereas previously...
We didn't ever.
They may not have.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Donahue, for the brief. I want to shout out you and your office. I mean, the work that you do with the EDA and the PPIC, those teams are both critical to a lot of what's going on up here, but maybe the unsung heroes in your office are Autumn, working with the small business community. So it's great that we have Bloom and Ink You Hub and Mustard Seed. It's important that we're kind of seen as an incubator for small business, but having somebody in your office that's kind of the liaison into all of that to provide training and support and really just connections. She does a great job. I know we've had all of these small businesses get help from not only your office, but also the grant program through the EDA. So all of that's critical to that success. And then I guess I would say you saved the best for last in your brief, so Portsmouth At Work, I think, is a critical, a critical resource that I don't know enough folks around Portsmouth know about. So, you know, we're building Pace Center. We already have the TCC Skilled Trades Academy. We have access now, and we'll have even more access when Pace comes online, to address the jobs, the job training. And, you know, you started off talking about maritime, so I'm just going to keep hammering away at this. The country needs 100,000 maritime workers, trade skill workers, across the next decade. 100,000. They're going to come from all over the country, but they're going to come here because here is where the jobs are. And so we just need to continue to work to stay out in front of that and get our people first in line for those jobs. I know the Navy is sending a lot of money to the Hampton Roads Workforce Council to invest in Hampton Roads' job workforce development. Can you speak to the relationship between Portsmouth At Work and the Workforce Council and some of the things that we're leveraging the Workforce Council to help us with?
Absolutely. And first, thank you for your comments, and I have the pleasure of coming before you this evening, but behind me is a whole team of individuals and partner organizations that helped me make all this happen, so I'd like to recognize them. You know, as one of those partner organizations, the Hampton Roads Workforce Council is a critical partner in what we're working to do. They have funding available for residents of Hampton Roads, including Portsmouth residents. So we do refer clients out to the Hampton Roads Workforce Council to utilize their resources and funding. We always like to do that first if we can. We do have funding that we can utilize that we have, but certainly want to rely on our partners who may have, you know, deeper pockets than we may because of the state and federal sources that they have access to. So we are working with them. We have actually connected some other organizations, including the Ship Guard, with them as well, and are currently actively providing apprenticeship support through the Workforce Council for Portsmouth businesses where we are funding wages, providing some wage assistance for an apprenticeship program with actually early right now. So that's a partnership we've developed with the Workforce Council, and we'll continue to develop that further. You know, we are heavily dependent on our partner organizations. We do provide some training in-house, but we often refer out to Tidewater Community College, the Maritime Academy, and they do a fantastic job, and our residents trained into an employment opportunity at the end, which is the goal, is to have a job ready and waiting for them when they're able to take it.
Yeah, so just kind of piggyback on your comments. So the Workforce Council has opportunities that are free. You have opportunities through Portsmouth At Work that are free with the money that is in the Portsmouth At Work budget, and also I think we're talking about community development block grant funding later on tonight, but there's money in there as well to come to Portsmouth At Work. And so the message here is, if you're stuck in a job or if you're having to work two part-time jobs to pay the rent, there's an opportunity through your team and/or through the Workforce Council to upskill, to get into one of these jobs that is a full-time job with benefits and $80,000 to $100,000 a year, so not a salary to sneeze at, and we just need to keep encouraging our folks to jump at those opportunities.
Well, I did want to say one thing, Brian. So I just want to congratulate you and your team and acknowledge the work that you've done. You make my job easier, particularly at the state of the city when we can share with the community and the region the successes that we've had in business growth and development. It seems to me the last couple of years, we've exceeded those goals that we have set forward, and that's important because, as I shared with my colleagues last night, 52% of the money that we bring into this city comes from our real estate, our homeowners, right? So the other 48% comes from certainly other taxes and areas, but a critical area as we continue to move our city forward is to bring business here to help us pay the bills to run our city. A good example, bringing the casino became our largest taxpayer, one of our largest on the business side. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we bring these entities here, we create an environment where people want to come. We actually increase the value of our community. So, sir, to you and your team, thank you for the work that you do. Continue to work and make progress, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Lieutenant Lux, is he outside? There he is. All right, he's up.
Yes, ma'am.
Lieutenant Lux is going to talk to us about the towing board.
Thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager and staff, I'm going to be talking about the towing rate adjustments that were proposed by our tow board this year. All right, so just a quick introduction. Our current tow fees are $105 per tow. Storage fees are $20, which normally kicks in after the first 24 hours of storage, and these were last updated early 2006. All right, so the purpose of this, to modernize and adjust the towing rates. Some of them haven't been changed since the early '90s, but it was last recently updated 2006. And we're trying to align our rates with our neighboring cities and to ensure competitiveness for our local tow companies. And some key considerations that were put out were the market standards. We reviewed all the towing industry standards and rates surrounding jurisdictions, and the cost of service has definitely increased. The operational cost faced by our local tow companies over the years due to inflation, fuel prices, and actually the vehicle cost. And typically, it'll bring in the better service from our providers. So here's our new proposed rates from the tow board, and it was broke down, before it was just a straight fee of $105. Now it's broken down by gross vehicle weight rating, and the lightweight vehicles, they want it to be $200, the medium weight, which is when you get into your bigger vans and, you know, your big trucks, instance, the work truck, $350, and then the semi trucks and dump trucks and stuff like that, it'd be $575. And then the storage fee will go up to $50 for the two weight, first two weight classes, and then $70 for the larger vehicles. And in comparison, that's right on board with what Norfolk just went through earlier this year. And then there's Chesapeake's rates. They're a little, they're similar, but they don't have the $575, but then their storage rates are higher than what we're proposing. Virginia Beach just did theirs, I think, recently too, and they're right on line with these. The reasons for the rates, again, is aligned with the neighboring cities, ensure that we're being fair, competitive, and compensated for our services that are provided and to reflect in the current market conditions. What we're asking is you consider updating the rates for the towing storage based on the vehicle size, maintain competitiveness in the city, the other jurisdictions, and adjust based on the market inflation. That's all I have. Pretty simple. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I do have one. Lieutenant Lux, so these rates would then be put in place to prevent what we've witnessed in our city, some towing companies having different rates set? Would everybody, would this be a standardized rate for every towing company that operates in the city of Portsmouth?
So no, sir. This is for our current list of our records that are with the tow board.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
So to clarify this, but this is only when the city requests towing? This is not for private towing?
That's any tow company that's on our current list with the tow board and the police department, that's what these rates are for.
So this does not cover private towing within the city?
If you're talking AAA or a company, somebody calls their own wrecker out of Norfolk over here, no, it would not apply.
It does not cover it?
Just our list.
Vice Mayor Moody.
What determines who gets on our list?
It's, so Officer Long with the police department maintains that list, and he vets them. There's only a certain amount that can be on them, and as one falls off, he'll ask. Typically, there's applications in with him, and he'll vet the applications, and then he'll decide.
So the towing board decides...
Well, now the towing board is back. They would have some say in that. You've got to remember, the tow board just came back in January.
Yep.
So, yes.
Do they have the ultimate say?
Tow board. For the list?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I really don't. I think Dave Long, Officer Long, will have the final say on who goes on that because he's in charge of that list.
How many on the list?
Last he told me, I think there was 10 maybe? 15?
It'd be good to know more detail about the process of getting on the list and staying on the list or getting taken off the list. What are the details of that whole process?
We'll report back to you. Yes, sir.
Attorney challenge, sir, you have the floor.
In response to your question, there is a City Code 37-250, tow book to be maintained by Chief of Police. The Chief of Police shall maintain the register of tow operators who shall be called in sequence to provide services to the scene of accidents or traffic hazards. Tow book shall be maintained and administered by the Chief of Police. It talks about the Chief of Police shall provide for the following matters: compliant with minimum safety standards, ownership or possession of all equipment, a fee schedule, promulgated by the Chief of Police, so forth and so on, and additional charges for unusual circumstances. So there's a statute that deals with this, and I'll be happy to provide that statute. It doesn't address all of the questions that you have, but it does provide some framework in which this exists.
So a lot of that responsibility and oversight lies with the police chief?
It does, with the police, yes. The police chief.
Delegating, but ultimately it's his responsibility.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be good to learn some more details.
Get you some good information.
Councilwoman.
Can you explain what was the status of the tow board before January? Why are we bringing it back on? Is that why this was not updated since 2006?
I'm not sure exactly when the tow board went away, but it went away several years ago, and we just brought it back toward the end of last year.
And it operates as one of our boards in commission with the appointees.
Yes.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
I was lucky enough to attend the meeting of the tow board, and they do have some other concerns that we're going to be seeing in the future, meaning there's some predatory towing going on and some legal issues about cars being towed out of our city that we're going to see in the future. So this is one of a number of issues, just to get your ears wet and up about the issues they'll be bringing before us.
Vice Mayor Moody.
Also, the impound lot. We just have one impound lot? Are these cars towed to?
We just, yes, sir. So we just, we just changed that policy with the PD. We're not using a contract storage lot anymore. They're going to whatever the next wrecker is on the list. If it's not some evidentiary value, it's going to that wrecker company. If it's evidentiary value and we can't process it at the scene, we need to impound it, it's going to the city garage. We have our, our forensics has their own bay now that's secure, and it goes there, gets processed within 72 hours, and then the city wrecker will take it to the wrecker lot that actually towed it there, and then it's released from there.
Okay. So unless it's a forensic situation... Okay, so unless it's a forensic situation, the individual towing company takes it to their lot?
Correct. And the owner will be notified where it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Lieutenant Luck.
Thank you, sir.
Carter, you have the floor, sir?
Thank you, sir. Dr. Russell. The next presenter. Dr. Russell has a couple presentations that you'll be looking at. First one is the proposed Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. There is also a public hearing for this topic, wants to get into our regular meeting, but she also has a couple of permit extensions that she's going to provide to you also.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Dr. Russell.
Good evening.
I, um...
That's what you sent us.
All right, thank you, here we go again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are presenting for your consideration this evening, the proposed Community Development Block Grant budget for the FY '25, FY '26 program year. And so the City VG and home budget is developed based on the adopted action plan, and so our current action plan was adopted in FY '24, and that action plan identifies the following activities that we would be implementing over a five-year period, and this is year two of that action plan. Those include the expansion of low and moderate income housing, supporting improvements to public facilities, improving and expanding public infrastructure, and supporting public services that further economic development, job creation, and then supporting the planning and administrative activities associated with implementing our community development program. And so HUD has not provided, as of yet, our budget for the FY '26, FY '25, FY '26 program year. So we're basing our recommendations for activities to fund on the current budget. And the current budget for City VG entitlement fund is $1,563,930. We add to that program income, and that's monies that are returned to the program for, for example, paying down housing rehab loans and things of that nature. And so the total funds that we estimate that will be available for the FY '25, '26 period So just real quickly, there are categories of eligible activities and caps on what we can fund, or the percentage of those program funds that we can fund in those activities. Public services capped at 15%, administration and planning capped at 20%, project use, we do not have a cap for those. And all activities that are recommended for funding and ultimately funded must use one of the three national program objectives. All right, so this table outlines all of the activities for programs that a funding request were made for, and then the administration recommendations for what we are proposing to fund. Let me stop and say, there are a number of mechanisms that we use to solicit applications for funding. We notify all of our prior program participants, there are advertisements that are let to let our community members know that those resources are available, and we're soliciting applications for funding. And so we have our City Parks and Recreation Mobile Kids Meals Program. They requested approximately 146,000. Staff is recommending that we fund that activity at 75,000. And FY '23, '24, there were 1,500 unduplicated meals served in this program. Our City Parks and Recreation Youth Leadership Program, which provides youth mentoring services for children 12 to 18 years old, they're proposing to support 70 youth in this program in next program year. They've requested 27,750, and we're recommending funding that activity. Our City Parks and Recreation Senior Transportation Program requested 70,568, and we're not recommending funding that program in the upcoming fiscal year. We believe that that program is a duplication of the pair transit services that are provided by HRT. Our Economic Development Workforce, I think Councilman Hubel mentioned this in Mr. Donahue's presentation, did request 100,000 in funding, we're recommending funding it at 58,000. They're proposing to serve 25 people, and it was last funded in FY '24 at a total of 44,000.
Excuse me, Dr. Russell, can we go back to that screen that went off of the screen that you're reading from? There you, nope, there you go. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks for having me, wasn't looking for it now, thank you. Economic Development, Workforce Development, we're recommending funding that at 58,000. The Independent Center provides supports for persons with disabilities, actually throughout our region, they're proposing to serve 100 people in the city of Portsmouth. They're asked for 35,000, and we're recommending funding that organization at 25,000. Four Kids Housing Crisis Hotline provides housing resources to persons experiencing homelessness. They have served 28,000, I'm sorry, 2,800 persons, they've asked for 63,000, and we're recommending 62,315,000. The Urban League of Hampton Roads has not previously been funded by the city of Portsmouth. They asked for 100,000 and would serve 100 people. We think that unit cost is, is high, and that project with respect to funding just needs some further development, and so we're not recommending funding that organization at this time. Children's Harbor Mental Health Counseling was funded this current program year. They did ask for 50,000 in this upcoming program year, and we're not recommending funding this program period. They provide mental health counseling and related services for children six weeks to 10 years old, and they're proposing that that would serve eight children, and the unit, that unit cost is, is high. And so that's the reason why we're not recommending funding that program. We can, out of our allotment, program administration, and we're recommending program administration funding at 170, I'd say 176,000 dollars. So our other City VG projects that we're proposing to fund in the upcoming program year is our Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority Housing Rehab Program. I actually talked about this a little bit at our retreat in our housing plan, in that we do have money set aside to provide support for that activity. For that, $200,000, and recommend funding would serve approximately seven units at $20,000 per unit. And so those funds typically are gonna fund emergency rehab needs, roof, HVAC, those types of needs. We're recommending supporting with gap funding for infrastructure specifically, the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority Twin Pines proposed development, and the replacement of playground equipment at Lexington Square at 55,000. We did have a request for Upward Care Incorporated, it's a boost program, and it's business coaching for childcare providers in the city of Portsmouth. They requested 184,000 dollars in funding, and we're not recommending funding this organization. They've not previously received funding in the city of Portsmouth. They're based out of Florida, and those funds would be to support the staffing and physical plant costs for their Florida location. So we just didn't believe that was the best use of all resources in the city of Portsmouth. Additionally, the services that they're proposing are duplicated by organizations that are in our community. Recommending funding at 575,000, the continued and completion of rehabilitation activities at our neighborhood facility, specifically kitchen and the bathrooms. So our home dollars for FY '26, 455,000 revenue, 455,398,31 cents, and our request for funding are at 504,159,000. And these are our recommendations. Four Kids, in addition to the Housing Crisis Hotline, provides tenant-based rental assistance, and they're requesting 185,850, and we're recommending funding them at 100% of their request. The Hampton Roads Planning District Commission for Down Payment and Closing Cost Assistance requested 250,000, and we're recommending funding them at 201,238,56 cents. And then the home program requires that we set aside 15% of our annual allocation for organizations that are certified as CHODOs, and that specific number is 68,309,75 cents, which we can amortize over a multi-year period, and we are being more aggressive about using those monies so that we don't forgo them when we don't use them. And so we're specifically partnering with Habitat for Humanity and HRCAP, Hampton Roads Community Action Program, that is really working hard to expand their footprint into Portsmouth. So our next steps for actualizing implementation of our Community Development Block Grant and Home Program and FY '25, '26 is our public hearing, and so we do have a public hearing that was advertised and is scheduled for this evening, as well as the 22nd adoption of our year two community action plan. And if approved by council, then we would submit the proposed budget schedule and action plan to HUD for approval. We try to get as close as possible to the start of the fiscal year, have that information submitted to HUD, so that we're not delaying our program vendors, because we, you know, the program is reimbursable, so all of the costs, they incur the cost, but until our documents are approved by council, signed off by HUD, and we are not able to release any funds.
Right.
So happy to answer questions from council, as you directly.
Any questions for Dr. Russell? Councilman Hubel, sir, you have the floor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, just a comment on, on Upwards Care. I know they asked for 184,000, I heard what you said they were planning to use it for. I went to a conference session where they briefed their services at the NLC thing up in DC. One of the services they provide, and they do it for free, is website services, so, so any privately owned childcare or, or for-profit childcare can register with them. They do vetting of the childcare entity, and then post that availability, including how many openings they have at any particular time, and so important because as parents are looking for childcare, a lot of times they don't know where to go. Upwards does it for the entire, well, they do it for anybody that registers with them. I visited their website after I came back from NLC, and there were 23 private childcare entities in Portsmouth that were listed on the Upwards website. The funding that they asked for here for business coaching for childcare, what they briefed at NLC was they come to, and the 184,000 would be for all 23 that are registered in Portsmouth, they would visit each of them and give them coaching on how to get certified and grow their business and market and all that. So, so got it that we're not gonna fund them, but, but that's what they do. We go over to the home projects. So, the manager and I had this conversation sworn during our budget brief, so my understanding is Four Kids supplies two kinds of service to the, to the community. One is the homeless hotline, which was covered on a different slide. The other service that they, that they talked to me about when I visited was an eviction prevention program.
Yeah, that's what you asked.
And I'm wondering if the tenant-based rent assistance and eviction prevention are the, if that's the same thing?
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's why I was asking about that this morning.
Yeah, so, so I wonder if, if you could follow up to see if...
Those names are synonymous.
Yeah, if, if we're talking about the same program, because my understanding is Portsmouth had funded eviction prevention at Four Kids. We had people in the city that were using eviction prevention to try to keep them in their house rather than letting them get tossed out and then dealing with the homeless hotline. And, and so if this is the same thing, that's good. If it's not the same thing, then, then I think maybe we have some more homework to do to try to figure out, okay, we didn't, we somehow funded it before, and, and are we funding it now some other way, or are we not funding it, but, but it's a service that, that our folks have been using? For the other two, for the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the Community Housing Development, how do, how do our residents get to those things?
So, HRPDC is active with the Real Estate Brokerage Network.
Okay.
And so that is one vehicle that our residents are able to, to find out about these resources.
So the Realtor would connect them with HRPDC?
Mm-hmm. Income-eligible households.
Okay. And you, so for Community Housing Development, you mentioned Habitat for Humanity and somebody else?
HR Hampton Roads Community Action Program.
Okay, and so Habitat, I guess, has a kind of a relatively new program where they not only build houses, but they do refurbishment for qualifying people. Is this their refurbishment program?
It's, it's, it could be, but Habitat has advised us that their preference is new builds. So, I don't think we have it, but we're, we are partnering with a local opportunity to share some of the costs to develop a large parcel, we believe, for the city of Portsmouth. And a number of those lots will then be developed by our CHODO partners.
Okay, and I know this Habitat in the past has had trouble finding property to build new builds on, and so rather than sit around and not do anything with their volunteers, I guess they've expanded to go in and do remodels where, as long as you qualify, and I think it's a kind of a...
some of the costs to develop a large parcel, we believe, for the city of Portsmouth. And a number of those lots will then be developed by our CHODO partners.
Okay, and I know Habitat in the past has had trouble finding property to build new builds on, and so rather than sit around and not do anything with their volunteers, I guess they've expanded to go in and do remodels where, as long as you qualify, and I think it's a kind of a seniors' targeted program to help go in and do remodels where they don't have to worry about finding property. Did they come and talk to you?
They did.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor, Moody, you have the floor?
There was one time where CHODO rehabbed houses to get them back on the tax rolls. So they do not do that anymore?
So I don't want to say they don't do it. Their preference is for new builds, and some of the reason behind that is that the households are low, moderate-income households, and so if you have a new build with the first-year contractor's warranty, and then all of your major systems are warranted for a year or more, then a low-income household, perhaps a single-household buyer, is better able to manage the maintenance of that unit, especially if they're transitioning from where they were tenants, and the landlord was responsible for all of those costs, then the transition is easier. So that's the feedback that Habitat has provided. They have a standard unit that is a craft-style home that they, you know, they'll change some of the features so that it, you know, from the exterior looks different, it doesn't look like a cookie cutter home on every single lot, and that's their preference is to do that over and over again, because they've developed some economies of scale by practicing that model.
So does our CHODO operate the same as other ones in Hampton Roads?
The other one, Hampton Roads Community Action Program?
Yeah.
Yes, but their footprint is primarily on the peninsula, but they're regional.
Okay. Because what used to be, when they rehabbed houses for young families, what was attractive with that? They would take a house that was, you know, maybe on the verge of being a blight influence in the community, they were rehabbing it and getting it back on the tax rolls, and, you know, a young family would buy the house. So that part is not there anymore.
It's there. They're just, their preference is...
New house?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Thanks.
Councilman Tillig, you have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. For Kids, so to Councilman Hugel's point, he bought up the eviction program. And so the acronym is VERP, and that is two different programs.
What's the acronym?
VERP, V-E-R-P. And VERP actually will match the funds of the locality. And so what they're requesting from the city, I believe, is around, I think it's somewhere around this price range, but whatever the city contributes, the Commonwealth will match that gap. And so we'll be able to get double our impact for what we offer. And I can connect you with their contact, but it's a total separate program for that. And a lot of people, and a lot of our residents are using both programs, actually, but I do know that the tenant-based rent assistance program, I'm surprised that figure is what it is, because I do know, speaking with a lot of our constituents and also speaking with Four Kids, Portsmouth runs out pretty quickly with their rent assistance needs. But the VERP helps to prevent people from being evicted and also puts them onto a program of sustainability. So it's also teaching them financial literacy and also helping them with their legal aspects, because when people get evicted, not only do you have to pay the back rent, you're also getting caught up in the legal fees and all of that thing. So it's a pretty good program, and I can send you their contact.
Yeah, of course. I'm not familiar with that at all.
And to the councilman's point, it is a good program indeed. A lot of our folks take advantage of it. One of the things I did want to alert everybody to, so if you recall, we had a presentation done by the Planning District on the first-time homebuyer program that we're a part of. If we need a refresher, we can certainly invite them to come back and update us as to how that program works. I think it's a very viable program. The other thing is, to Vice Mayor's point, I had a conversation about the CHODOs, and I do understand, you know, previously, historically, after speaking with Jeff Kramer, we did have some CHODOs, nonprofit organizations that dealt with housing, but there were some issues, I think with some overruns and things like that, if you recall, Mr. Moody years ago?
I do recall that.
There were some issues with overruns and things, and so the program has gotten a little bit more stringent because of those overruns, because at the end of the day, these are federal dollars that we're using to improve housing for our vulnerable citizens, and the city is responsible for ensuring that those funds are handled appropriately. Because a flip side to that is, if those funds are not handled appropriately, we get on the hook for it, and the program can be shut down. Is that fair?
And we pay them back.
And we pay them back.
Back.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, and we had to do that with...
We did.
...Community Development Block Grant money just a couple of years ago.
We did.
We used it to take down some blighting houses, I think in the Craddock area, and it couldn't be used for that. So, you know, it had to be paid back.
Yep. So...
That program is the Virginia Eviction Reduction Pilot.
Yes, yes.
So I'll get some information on that. I have nothing to leave with it.
Thank you, Dr. Russell, for that presentation, man.
Thank you. Should I say this?
You do. It's on you.
Are you ready for the next? Yes, ma'am.
It was all over the paper.
That was a big stink.
That's why they put some stringent rules to it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to introduce to council and staff, not introduce, you all know this, is Alisa Winston, the Executive Director of the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, and she is joined by Mr. Andre Blakely, who is President of the TRG Community Development Company. And they are here this evening to ask council permission to extend approval of the use permit application number 2215 for the proposed Twin Pines development. Before they come forward, let me share with you just two pieces of information that are pertinent to this request. The Portsmouth zoning ordinance specifically allows council to extend for a period not to exceed one year from the original expiration date, the approval of a conditional use permit. This approval and the timeframe, what's the best way to describe it, was expired during COVID.
Right.
And the Virginia General Assembly, in recognition of the impacts of COVID on development projects, extended approvals for use permits and other land use actions through July 1, 2025. And so that's important, because the approval date for the Twin Pines development, coupled with this, actually gave them more than a year. And so I would ask that applicants come forward and explain their request to council for your action, not tonight, but if your next city council meeting and staff is actually in approval of the request. So...
Dr. Russell, before you take your seat and invite up our guest, Councilman Hugel has a question.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So Dr. Russell, just a procedural thing, so this doesn't have to go back to Planning Commission before it comes to council?
Yes.
It just comes straight here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Good to see you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, I'm Alisa Winston, Executive Director for Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and joining me tonight is Mr. Andre Blakely. He is one of our developer partners on this project, Twin Pines. So as Dr. Russell stated, we are here to ask for an extension to build Twin Pines Senior Housing. That is 82 units of senior housing. We've made a significant investment in this project, and we're going to see it through. So I'm going to ask Mr. Blakely just to step up over here just a little bit. He's going to give more details of the project and a timeline for completion of construction.
Welcome, Mr. Blakely.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Winston, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and the leadership. I'm Andre Blakely, the President of TRG Community Development. As Director Winston mentioned, we're PRHA's development partner for this development effort, which is an 82-unit new construction, proposed senior development located at... Sorry.
Just hit the next button.
Is that here on the side?
Let me have that. Hold on. Let me assist you here.
I can just use that.
Just hit that.
Yeah, I can use that.
Yeah.
Located at 3993 Twin Pines Road. The, some of the amenities, and I'll show also a few of the, just the previously approved concept and the current concept, so there's been no major changes or deviation from what was previously approved. Most of our challenges have just been financial and securing the remaining dollars that were needed to move this deal forward. And there was one particular issue, and that was, as it relates to the geotech issues, we have to bring in a significant amount of soils. There were some unsuitable soils. And then we also have to do some other site work that really drives the cost in this project when you compare it to other, you know, similar type of new construction developments. We've been able to work through a lot of those challenges. We have commitments from various entities already. DHCD has already committed 3.4 million dollars. We're planning to move forward with our Virginia Housing applications on May 1. We just had a pre-loan application meeting with Virginia Housing last week, and they're committing more than they would normally commit for these, you know, for these types of projects. It is all non-competitive financing, so when we do submit on May 1, it is imminent. It's not a, you know, a matter of if, it's just a matter of when, and it's a very prescribed process. And I'll share the timeline with you. So here's our anticipated timeline, as I mentioned, May 1 submission, loan review and approval in August, bond inclusion, this is a 4% taxes at bond transaction. We expect to have that in September of 2025, and anticipated financial closing at the end of October, worst case, the first week of November. We expect to pull building permits and start construction mobilization right away. Earth and site work, because we have to charge the soil that we're bringing in, that will start right away, and will last for a duration of between November of 2025 and February 2026. And then we anticipate to commence with the building footprint in March of 2026 with full completion and start of lease-up scheduled for May of 2027. So effectively, an 18-month construction timeline.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Let me go back to the amenities, it would be helpful just to share. So we do have, you know, a bevy of services, both in the units and in the community spaces. Clubhouse and art room, we're looking to duplicate some efforts that we, some success that we've seen with art programming and making that a part of, integrating that into affordable housing development. Library and computer space, interior bike storage, fitness room, dog park, outdoor plaza space and seating areas. Some of these amenities were stipulated in the original approval, so you may already be familiar with the amenities that I'm mentioning, but also laundry room in each floor, washer and dryer connection, dishwasher and balconies, that was definitely a part of the original proposal, and so there are no deviations in that regard. Oh, did you want to say something in closing, Director Winston?
So we're committed to seeing this project through. You all know our seniors are one of our most vulnerable populations. We have over 900 seniors on our waitlist now for our property, so we know that they are needing housing. Many of them are on fixed incomes, so it's important for us to make sure that we move forward with this project. And we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Winston. We'll start off with our Vice Mayor.
Now, this falls in the category of affordable housing?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what does that link to? Is that indexed according to income level?
Yes, so for the most part, it's interpreted as anyone that's 60% or below of the area median income. In addition, the units will be supported by subsidy voucher assistance for those that need it and that fall below that 60%. In some cases, a lot of our seniors are in that 10% to 25% range, and so we'll have subsidies there to cover that difference for them.
Section 8?
Yes, so they will pay no more than 30% of their income towards the rent.
Now, it's different than Section 8, because it stays with the project. It's not, it's not a portable tenant voucher.
So it's not tenant-based?
It's called project-based vouchers.
Project-based.
Yeah.
Okay. And what will the rents be? Do you have a range?
So the rents will be $14.96 for the one-bedrooms. So of the 82 units, we have 71 bedrooms and 12 two-bedroom units, $14.96 for the one-bedroom units, and $17.05 for the two-bedroom units. And again, some portion of that will be subsidized to offset what the tenant can actually pay so that they don't exceed 30% of their monthly income.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilman Tillig, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is in line with the affordable housing. So when this was presented to council on December 13 of 2022, it was presented by the owner, Mr. Sando, of the flats at Twin Pines LLC, and it was presented to council as a market rate complex. And on November 1, 2022, at the Planning Commission meeting, it was asked by Commissioner Curry, is this a market rate development or an income-based development? And Mr. Sando said this is market rate. And so my concern is, well, and then a few days after the city council issued a use, a permit, it was a sales transfer to PRHA. So my concern is just the lack of transparency to the community during the initial application. And so when there was a public hearing on this matter, many members, well, all members of the community were under the impression of a different project. And then council voted on the approval of this under the impression that it was a market rate development by a different developer. And so there are some questions, some concerns I have with that, just because there's some lack of transparency at that point. And to me, it was just kind of a little bit misleading to the community. I'm all for affordable housing and things of that nature, but to me, it didn't allow the community the input to be able to participate in that public hearing at that time. And so if you all could just elaborate on that aspect, I do know that when I first got on city council, it was bought up by a council member to the previous executive director at that time, and the answer was never given. And it kind of got a little heated in that meeting, but there was never any resolve. So if you could provide some insight.
So TRG was not the original developer on this project. The Housing Authority was approached by the previous developer-owner of the property, because they couldn't move forward with the project.
Yes.
And so they asked us to move forward with the project. I don't want to guess, the reason, I'm assuming maybe reasoning behind the soil and additional cost, you know, made this not a viable project, you know, for them. know, made this not a viable project, you know, for them. However, we're building the exact same property that was proposed at that Planning Commission and City Council. So we have not changed what was presented to you all for that.
So I see that it's the exact same blueprints and everything. The part that, you know, that just was misinterpreted to the community was the market rate aspect. And so I feel like this is something, in my opinion, that would, I would like to see another public hearing to allow the community the input to be able to speak on that. Because like I said, it was shortly after the approval of that permit that there was a sales transaction. And so I know that, you know, you're, I know what you're saying, that, you know, there were some financial things, but like I said, it was a very, it was a very close window from the approval process to the sales transfer. And so like I said, it was bought up at that time by a council member, and that meeting got a little heated, and no answer was ever given. And I know that you all put a lot of time and investment into it since then, but it's still, for the sake of transparency and the sake of public input, I think it's vital that members of the Cherslam community get to provide some input.
Council, Vice Mayor Moody, then, then Councilwoman.
Well, the, that area has a civic league, Long Point Civic League. Are they aware of the change?
We haven't, as far as the income or the project? Because the project has not changed. I was not, I forget, the previous developer, he did, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming he had met with the civic league. I'm not sure. I don't want to say if he did or didn't.
Well, the appearance of the project perhaps hasn't changed.
Right.
Mayor, I think it would be good that council look at what was approved by the previous council. And as we all know, one council can't bind another council to any agreement. So I think it'd be good if we, we see what was, what the details were at that time.
I did want...
As far as being market, market rate and affordable housing, two different things. And I'm all for affordable housing, but I want to know what I'm voting on. And at that time, as Councilman Tillage points out, it was presented as market rate, not affordable housing. And I think that was important to the civic league at that time and some of the members of the community who spoke at the public hearing on the matter. So...
I did want to just remind you that this is time-sensitive. We have to submit, you know, to Virginia Housing by May 1. Our use permit does not expire until July 1. So technically, if we were to get in and dig some dirt and, I guess we could move forward, you know, long as it's done by July 1. That wasn't a completion date. That was a start date. I reached out to the Director of Planning late last year, early this year, to let her know that we're going to be looking at an extension and what was that process. So, you know, just keep in mind that the deadline, May 1.
May 1.
May 1.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak on it because I've been keeping up with some of the updates, being a part, Councilwoman Bryan and I are part of the PRHA as council liaison. And I also, I think this question is really for Dr. Russell. You've been giving us updates on, just explaining how use permits work. Once a use, use permit for, for a development has happened, when does it have to come back to council? Because even if the use permit that's voted on, I think Councilman Tillage was talking about back in 2022, something was voted on, a use permit for this parcel, nothing changed regarding the development except, so it would never have to legally come back to council? Can you kind of dive into that a little bit more? Because we had just had a conversation about this when we're talking about a prior property, and I want to understand, make sure we're not over-complicating this, but making sure that we're making, you know, the right choice here.
The, thank you for the question. The ordinance specifically gives the applicant 24 years to start.
24 years?
Oh, I was like, wait. How do you get that?
Yeah. And I said, Mr. Carter, thank you. Tuned in on words. And I, 24 months to start construction.
Okay.
And the proof of construction is that they pulled their building permit, which means they've completed their site plan approval, and they've begun the construction of some phase of the development project.
Okay.
So, and I, I mean, you know, 20-plus years of doing this, I have seen developers, you know, in other communities game the system, and so they might do an accessory structure, but they've met that requirement if they've done that. So, and it's not even complete. They just have to start it.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Well, I think I want, no, not completely. So the use permit for this property is still good regardless of who owns the property, as long as the development changes, as long as the structure and plans that were approved and voted on by planning did not change.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. Right? Okay. That answered my question. So only if I'm hearing my council members right, your concern is that the rate of the units has changed?
So my concern was that when it was presented to council back in 2022, it was presented as something different. And if you go back and look at the sales transaction, it's shortly after the city had approved it. And so it could be seen as, using Dr. Russell's words, a game of the system. And I'm not saying, at the time, Ms. Winston was not the executive director. It was another person. And so the fact that it was presented as such, the community not having the ability to properly provide input because they thought it was something different. All I'm saying is, let's allow the public to engage in this conversation so that, because I've spoken to people that live in the Long Point area, that live in surrounding neighborhoods, and they did not know the type of development that it was.
But it always looked the same.
The appearance, yes. The buildings have not changed.
It always was going to serve seniors.
Yes.
Right?
The appearance is not the question.
Appearance is not the question.
Is it, so is the people's, that income that are going to take over? They're going to live there?
Yes, yeah, yeah. That's, that's, I think that if I could make, are you done, ma'am?
Oh, yes, yes.
I think, I think one of the things that I'm hearing here is, regardless, I hear my colleagues, I hear my colleagues' point, but regardless, there is still a public hearing. Is that, is that fair or is that not fair? Is there not going to be a public hearing or is not going to be a public hearing?
There's not one.
It's not going to be a public hearing because it's already been approved and they're just going for an extension. Okay? Now, based, based on, based on what you said, there was, what Councilman Tillage says, there was, there was a public hearing done on a project that was perhaps market rate. Was it still senior apartments?
Yes.
Okay. So it was still senior apartments. It was market rate. What you all are doing as, as the Portsmouth redevelopment and housing, what you're doing is basically you're saying affordable, right? So there will still be market rate people in there, or will it all be affordable? Can you answer that? Or will it be, I know you said project-based vouchers. So project-based vouchers will be based on their income. Is that fair?
Correct.
Is that fair? Okay. So based on their income, there will be some seniors who qualify for a subsidy.
Right.
And when we start using this stuff like Section 8 and all this kind of stuff, that, folks, we have a crisis in our city. And we have a crisis with our seniors affording, needing to have affordable housing. And we know that based on the data, that a lot of these seniors can't afford it. And I don't, I just, you know, I hear what, what folks are saying about market rate versus affordable housing, whatever term you want to put it. It is true, based on what you just shared, there will be some people who qualify for a subsidy based on their income of paying this $14.96. But also, hold on, there will also be people that are paying, they may not qualify or whatever the deal is, but here's the reality. All I want to make the point is, the housing is needed. The senior housing is needed. What is the average age of the person going in these houses?
You have to be 62 and up.
62 and up. So, so, so we got 62 and up, and folks are talking about affordable housing, and let's, let's talk about the reality. We talk about not in my backyard, and that's a reality too. I've been in enough housing presentations across the nation, and I know that some folk, but, but I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair here when we assess this thing. There is a time limit upon which we are working. The goal is to provide affordable housing to some of our most vulnerable seniors. If it is the pleasure of the majority to go through this process again, we are on a timeframe. What is, what is the outcome if we don't meet the timeframe?
To jeopardize, leaving...
We'll have to rescind the funds, that 3.4 million that's already been committed by Department of Housing and Community Development. And we have some considerable exceptions being taken by Virginia Housing to make, to move this deal forward because they also understand the urgency, the incredible demand for affordable housing, not just in Portsmouth. It's a crisis across the country. And I, in my experience, I will say that as a developer, you know, you have to be ready to pivot, or you won't be able to move deals forward.
Fine, fine. And the last point I want to make to that, we also have a market rate developer that's building apartments in Cherslam right now at the old Kroger site. If my, if my recollection is correct, that, that developer also had to come to council and receive an extension. Is that correct or not correct? The folks that are building at the Kroger site, did they not, I think it's Ripley Heat Wall, did they not have to receive an extension to move their product forward?
Do you remember this, Dr. Russell?
I don't.
I know that there was, but we can check into it, but I know that there was a timeframe, and they too had to come before council and have an extension because their time was running out too. And it was due primarily to your concerns. It was during COVID and financing. They weren't able to get their financing in line. And so that's my recollection, and I think it's pretty accurate. But in any event, I just think we need to be mindful of what we're doing here. And I don't disagree that people shouldn't have an opportunity to weigh in, but there are many more considerations, and I just wanted to put that out there for us to think about. Well, Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I didn't consider this a people issue. I considered it a transparency issue. And for the record, Holly Point wouldn't be there if it wasn't for Bill Moody's vote.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And my concern was that at the public hearing, people were presented one thing, and now it's another thing. It's, it's just not a good situation. The project's an excellent project, and we do need affordable housing, but the people in the community need to have a voice in that, which obviously now they won't, I'm not advocating torpedoing the project because of that, but for the record is, you know, the public hearing was one thing, and now the project's another thing. The appearance is the same, but, you know, the dynamics have changed, and I think that should be on the record, which it, obviously it is now.
And I also would like to add that it is totally a transparency issue. I was raised in a family that has received assistance, and I would not be here had it not been for that. My issue solely is the fact that transparency was not provided. And here we are two years later where this organization has made great investments to make this go forward. And I do not think that it is okay to set a precedent to allow for trans, lack of transparency to occur. The city of Portsmouth should be on one accord with our partnered agencies, and at that time, we were not on one accord, and that cannot be denied. And here we are now in this predicament where you are time-restrained, but to Vice Mayor Moody's point, it needs to be on the record because we are not going, I don't think we should allow for lack of transparency, and our citizens should have community input on all projects. And then when something is painted as such, and then something else comes out as a result, that is never okay. And so that is my point to be made. But at the same time, I understand here we are, and a decision does need to be made. But for the record, it needs to be on the record.
Fair enough. It needs to be on the record.
For clarity's sake, we don't vote on this tonight.
No.
This is a next-meeting item.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we wanted to include a public hearing before we took the vote, is there anything that precludes us from doing that?
I'm not sure. I think we're kind of creating a new process here.
That's correct.
I'm not just creating new processes. I just want to know. What do the ground rules allow us or not allow us to do? Because if we didn't do that, we ain't going to make this deadline.
I think it's time.
So you have the option of doing what you choose to do as a council. However, that's not the normal process.
But before we go there, I knew, I do, because we're talking about transparency and lack of, I do think we need to understand, and maybe you can help us understand this. Is it, is it within the realm of possibility that a transaction could be made in this kind of scenario, that, that a developer sits down, and I don't know because I'm not a developer, that says that they're going to do one thing, right? And then they're not capable of doing that project or for whatever reason, and they decide to move the project or sell the land or whatever. Has that ever occurred before? And is there a possibility that, that, I know there's a, there's a, there's an alleged statement that says that there was, there was people who knew that things were going to happen. But I guess my question is simply this. Is that unrealistic that that could potentially happen? Or is that something that we have to think that something nefarious was going on for that transaction to happen?
I don't think I have empirical evidence that will back this up, but I would venture to say that transactions like this happens all the time where nobody goes in with one set of plans, but because of whatever the situation is, whether it's physical or financial, they have to make a pivot and do something different. So that's not unheard of, and it's not unethical. However, I don't know the circumstances around this.
And I understand that, but the reason I say that is because if we're going, if we're going to label these terms, the fact that we had a difficult conversation, that's one thing, but that happens in a negotiation or even in a public hearing. My point is simply this. This is not an anomaly. This is not an anomaly. Is that fair?
That's fair.
So because it's not an anomaly, are we going to say this is something that we need as, as a city? It's a proven project? It's going to meet a significant need? Are we really wanting to go through this whole process again? And I would dare say, I know this has happened before, and whatever we felt or during the discussion, they purchased a piece of land, they're moving forward a project, they've made the investment, they have been transparent through this process. Is that fair?
It's fair.
Okay. The organization, so what are we talking about, folks?
Can I say it this way?
Yes, say it that way.
Just as we've talked earlier about one council can't hold another council to something that it agreed to. One developer can't hold another developer to something that it agreed to either.
Fair enough.
Plus, this man bought the land, it's his land to do what he wants to do.
Fair enough.
It falls within the confines of what the rules say you can do.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. We got five minutes to do another one of these. Yes, very fast.
All right, all right.
It's a read-and-digest version of this.
All right. So we have a request that was approved in March of 2023 by community housing partners, and they are also requesting an extension of their use permit. The applicant, Mr. Pfeifer, the applicant, is here, and they are, I guess, responsible for sharing with you the reasons for the delay associated with their project. So I'm going to get out of there.
So I'm going to get out of there and ask someone to speak really fast.
Yes.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having us. Milo Pfeffer, I'm representing Community Housing Partners Organization. We're a nonprofit developer that's owned and operated affordable housing in and around Virginia, and Maryland, and, and North Carolina. Today, we're talking about our project, Ansel, which we intended to begin construction on this year, but faced significant financial difficulties, which made us have to resubmit for more low-income housing tax credits. This will put the project on to a delivery path to begin construction next year. Ansel is 39 units of affordable housing, serving residents between 30% to 80% of the average median income, and we intend to start construction April of next year, granted this extension is approved. And I heard I'm under the gun, so I'll keep it short.
Yes.
Any questions? From my colleagues on council? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You done?
That was everything that we have prepared for you this evening. There's, in the next meeting, we have four public hearings, and one CMR tonight, Community Development Block Grant Action Plan is the first public hearing. The other three public hearings deal with our fiscal year, 26 budget, the annual operating budget, the capital improvement plan, and changes to rates unless for fiscal year 26. We only have one CMR, and it is the adoption of an ordinance accepting the Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium, continuing of care planning grant for $95,199 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, for use by the Department of Social Services for planning activities to address homelessness. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you very much for your time, and let me do, let me say this, I think it's really important. We had some really great conversations about some things that we didn't agree on as a group, but we came out of that last night with one mind, one voice.
Mm-hmm.
And we were able to get through that, even though we had some disagreements. Same thing happened tonight, where we don't agree on everything, but the professionalism and character and courage of you people that, that's dealing with these issues came through, and it managed to, the way that you presented yourself. So I say thank you for the way that you presented yourself through these hard conversations that we've had the last couple of nights. So thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All minds are clear, do we have any council liaison reports?
I have one.
Councilwoman Bryan, ma'am, you have the floor.
I have several, you want to go first?
Yeah, so mine's the Porton Industrial Commission. Mr. Donahue mentioned that we have two transload facilities coming. This is grain coming in from the Midwest by train, getting offloaded and put into containers to go out the port on ships. PPIC, at their last meeting, voted to be the liaison between one of those transload companies and the Department of Transportation to request grant funding to support the, the construction of that facility. And so that was approved, the PPIC will move forward to apply for, for grant funding on behalf of, of that transload operator, and, and so things are moving forward on both fronts for both transload facilities now. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryan, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say it's been a real pleasure to get out to liaison meetings in the last three months and meet folks, and getting a lot of really good feedback that commissioners across the city are really happy to see council engage. Went to PRHA with Councilwoman Thomas a few times this year, and one of the interesting points about the other senior housing project that I wanted to raise was the Lexington Seniors Project, which it's currently being called. There's an effort within the community to name this project somehow linked to the neighborhood, to Lincoln Park. So there's a community group that's going to be working to choose a name to honor someone locally in the community, which is a nice touch. The PRHA board in its February meeting did also discuss some audit and human resources issues and processes that are currently in place, and they're working to catch up on those. Behavior Healthcare is settling in with their new director, Ms. Bradstock, and we've heard some presentations from the Medication Management Services Team and the Developmentally Disabled Services Team, and she praised them for their work in the community. Another interesting point is that Ms. Bradstock is evaluating current projects and goals as she's settling in, and one of particular interest is that we're working on getting a 30-foot, 34-foot RV that will be outfitted to provide substance abuse treatment, which is really important because Portsmouth is number three in the state for opioid overdose.
That's true.
And so they're going to Hampton actually to see how that RV is outfitted, and they're going to come back with some ideas to put that into our community. And that's a really critical need.
Have it been purchased already, ordered already?
Ordered already, so they're going to be fitting it out.
Awesome.
Social Services meets Quarterly, so I met with those folks, and they did a round of departmental overviews, what everybody's doing, excuse me, program overviews within their departments. Their new director, Ms. Manigal Westbrook, is also evaluating what's going on there. One thing I wanted to make sure to convey to everyone is that there's an issue with Snap cards being very vulnerable to theft, and there is a protection in place that you can download an app on your mobile device to protect the accounts, because if the accounts are taken, excuse me, if the money is taken from the account, it cannot be recovered. And so a silver lining that came out of that was that the Social Services folks asked for restocking the food pantry to supplement the needs of the people who lost funding and can't recover that funding, and the city staff just impressed across the board with what was collected. And so she was very grateful for that. Parks and Rec is coming up on a big week next week with the Portsmouth Invitational Tournament, which will be livestreamed this year, so there's information about that on their website. And the senior sports days is coming up in May with a new feature, which is the athletes' ball. So anyone who is participating that is 50-plus is invited to also participate in the ball at the end to honor their, their athleticism. Summer race filled up in the first day, which is a great thing, because kids will be busy this summer. And lastly, I made my rounds, you guys. Lastly, Councilman Hugel and I went to the school board, first school board meeting, very much looking forward to going to the next one, I believe it's next week or the week after Councilman. But we left that meeting, we talked about some of the capital improvement projects, and we left that meeting with a, a positive sense of building the relationship between council and school board. We all agreed, Mr. Carter was there, our superintendent was there, that it's important that the schools and the city have a good working relationship to meet our common goals. And it was very nice to be part of that team, and I look forward to doing that work. So, thank you all for letting me run through the liaison reports.
Thank you for that comprehensive report.
Yes.
And thank you also, Councilman Hugel, for your report. We do have a need to go into a closed session?
Actually, Mayor, you all were provided with the boards and commissions last night.
Yes, ma'am.
It will be coming up on your agenda, so if there's any additional follow-up, any questions, anyone has, they can ask it during that portion rather than you all having to go into closed session.
Okay, so will that be-
For the sake of time.
Understood, ma'am. So that will be under items submitted by council?
That will be under new business, under boards and commissions.
Board and commissions, right.
Hopefully, everybody brought their sheet back.
Very good. So with that in mind, this, this work session is adjourned. It is 7 o'clock, so if we could get back to our seats at 7:10, 7:10, we will, we will begin our regularly scheduled council meeting. This meeting is adjourned.